It's a three-day, it's a three-day clock?
All right, seven o'clock. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Calling the March 4th, 2025 meeting order, let the record reflect at 7:00 P.M. This is a special meeting this evening. You're at the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Stonington. I'm Chuck Sheehan, I'm the chairman. Evening to all the members, we have all our regular members present. And thank you to the alternates for being present this evening also. So there'll be no appointment of alternates, that's the second item on the agenda. What's the commission's pleasure on minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1782 from February 18, 2025, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Number 1783, February 20th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1783 from February 20th, 2025, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Last minutes, number 1784.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve meeting minutes for meeting number 1784 from February 26, 2025, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion?
I didn't attend, I can't.
I wasn't there either.
Okay, can abstain then, here?
I'm gonna abstain too, I wasn't there either.
I'll abstain as well, I was there for three quarters of it.
Okay, two abstentions? All in favor? Chair votes aye, anyone opposed? Two abstentions? Motion passes.
Three abstentions.
The three?
I wasn't there either.
Okay. All right, then, I will have to bring that up again next time. Move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that wishes to address an item that's not on the agenda. Have an opportunity to come forward, identify yourself, and speak your piece to the board. Anyone from the public wish to, wish to address the board this evening on an item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we move on to correspondence. Clifton?
None.
No correspondence. Staff, any, any report from staff?
None.
Anything under commission, I have nothing. Anything in addition on zoning enforcement violations, Clifton?
No.
And nothing to report under administrative review?
Nope.
Brings us to item 7A, Old Business. Application number PG 2502 CAMM Weber, represented by P. Gardner, Coastal Area Management Review. Evening, sir.
Evening. Peter Gardner for the property owner at 116 Cove Road, 8 Latimer Point Road, Stonington.
Excuse me, before we go on, just in total transparency, I live on Cove Road. I don't feel I need to recuse myself in any way, but I just want to let you know.
Thank you.
Likewise, I guess, since, since we're identifying ourselves, I'm not an aggrieved party in any way, I'm not within the radius to be defined as an aggrieved party, and I have no bias on this application, so I'll be sitting on it as well.
Thank you. 116 Cove Road is a property that's been developed, and what the applicant is proposing is to reconstruct, essentially rebuild, a section of wall that is along the Quambon Cove. And the plans have been prepared to show that in detail. There was a wall that has collapsed, and they plan to rebuild about, about 25 feet of it. The wall ends at a, the existing dock, and there was a set of stone stairs that went from the dock up to the, towards the house, and he wants to replace those stones also. This plan's been reviewed by both consultants and town staff. I was out of town until, till today, I got the comments today, and I reviewed them and talked to Clifton about it. I'm, I'm in agreement with Clifton's comments, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the commission members have.
Have you seen Deep's comments?
Yes.
Okay. And it appears as though they're looking for more information on this application.
Yes. I don't, I don't see any problem with answering their questions. The only thing I'm not, not familiar with at all is the, is the dock. It was there when we did our survey work, and that's gonna take some looking into.
It's sort of a, a sterile plan, I think the commission might benefit from actually seeing the plans as they mature, and getting the town engineer's report as well.
The town engineer's reports in there. The real outstanding comments were the ones from Deep.
Right, right.
So I have a couple of questions. When did the wall fall down?
I don't know.
Because I...
The step, the steps were removed. The stone masons started the work out there. The portion of the wall that he plans to rebuild, he took down. At some point, the mason went into town staff and asked about it, and was told he needed a CAMM application. But he did remove some of the stones that were going down towards the dock, as well as a portion of the wall that he wants to rebuild. And when he went down there, he's informed we needed a CAMM application, and came to me.
Okay, so when I read the application, I, I read it that the wall fell down versus it was purposely removed.
I, I...
Which is what you just said.
He removed what was left of it, I don't know whether it fell, fell down, it wasn't on the property before he started his work, I'm just telling you what the mason told
And then I, I'm looking at the plan, and it kind of seems, as I'm, as I'm looking at this, that the new portion of the stone wall, it's almost like it's, it's, it's curving in towards the cove. Is that, is that correct?
I...
I mean, it, it looks like the stone wall from, from the diagram is almost over the wa, going to be in the water, because it's coming down like this, the slope, and the stone wall is going out with the dock. Is that correct?
No.
Dock's going the other way.
Right, yeah, to the right.
To the left is the stairs up to the property.
Do you wanna put maybe?
Yeah.
If you could put that up to Deep and show us.
Yeah. I've got five copies of the public, the one you're playing with. Excuse me.
Yeah. So this is the property. This is the cove.
So you've got, here's the wall, right?
Yeah, please do, this is the new portion of the wall, right here. This property is, the property is going down.
Okay, that's where it is now, yeah, this part.
And the water comes up here, so this wall will be in the water.
No. If you look over to the detail here.
Yeah.
This is the high tide line, and those are elevations along the high tide line. And they also talk about the coastal jurisdiction, which elevation too. So we have nothing taking place either within, up to the high tide line or within coastal jurisdiction line. So this is, this here, I blew up, making it easier to see.
Thank you.
You are.
Deep had some serious questions about whether you're replacing an existing wall or building a brand-new wall, and they recommended an alternative, which they said they would approve, and that is, I think, replacing the existing wall. Is, is that not correct? I mean, is that, did I paraphrase pretty much what Deep said, Clifton?
Deep had a lot of questions about the structural component of the wall.
Correct.
They did. And so there's, they, they identified a solution, but they really were just asking mainly for more information on the structural design.
I, I think as, as we move through the process with Deep, and we see what they're gonna, I, I'd like to, if we're gonna approve this CAMM application, see what Deep's gonna require, so that we're approving something that's realistic. I mean, Deep may look at this, and you may have to end up coming back to us anyway, if this changes dramatically. So I'd rather have you, you know, get a little closer with Deep, so we can actually take a look at, at...
Yeah, I don't think they have a...
Yeah, 'cause they also know that Deep, yeah, the dock... Town engineer may have additional comments also, so...
Just to clarify, the reason why this application's before the commission is because of the component next to the stairs identified as new. If the applicant was just replacing the existing wall as-is, they wouldn't have to come before you for a CAMM application.
Correct.
So because it was identified by, on the plans as a new structural wall, and it might have historically been there, but, you know, we didn't know at the time when we reviewed it, and so we brought it before you as a CAMM. If it did exist prior to, and then was, is being replaced, then everyone would even be in front of you guys at this point.
So are you saying that if the owner provides pictures showing that the wall existed, we could withdraw this application and not have to deal with a CAMM application?
You'd still have to deal with Deep, yeah. But that would, that would be outside of this, the purview of this commission.
So it's a good, the wall, we'll do whatever you wanna do, but these, these comments are easy to address, and I agree with Clifton's suggestion that you approve it with the condition that we move forward, working with town staff and Deep, and get a decision like that tonight.
I don't know, I think, I think Deep's comments are serious.
Yeah, we can't approve this tonight.
I, I think I'd rather see what Deep is gonna approve her, and, and have the plan reflect, you know, Deep's thoughts. If it's easy to do, you should be back to us next month, and we should, it should be a done deal.
Well, the application's been done several weeks ago, and I didn't get Deep's comments until today. So it may not be as easy as you think to get response back from Deep on this, to come back at the next meeting and get approvals. That's why I, when I saw Clifton's suggestion, I felt that was a good way to move forward.
I don't know, I just think the plan could change dramatically based on what Deep said, and, and I've dealt with Deep on a number of occasions, so I, I would rather see this go back to Deep and come back to us with a plan that, that is closer to something they're gonna approve. Doesn't have to have a deep approval, just some indication from Deep that they're further along than they were when they made those comments.
Commissioner's assuring.
And you have, you have time, because we don't, I mean, we don't have to make a decision on this until April 24th on the current submission, correct?
Nope, correct.
So, I mean, there's, there's some time, you've got a month and a half, at least, you know, correct, to, to reach out to Deep or respond to them, get their feedback, and then come back to us.
Yes, I know.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of mapping it out in my own head to see.
If it were, if it were minor conditions, I'd be happy to grant a contentious approval. But Deep's comments aren't mine, so... What's the commission's pleasure on item 7A?
Table.
I guess, yeah, I was gonna say, can we table it until, you know, you come back with responses to Deep comments?
Oh, yeah, I, if I had the comments earlier, I would've been...
No, understood, I get it, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion?
Uh, to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this application, PG 2502 CAMM, until, do we need to target a meeting for it?
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, appreciate your cooperation.
Just say the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Second.
Motion to table item 7A, my made and seconded by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains. Item 7B, McDuff Associates LLC, PZC application 2504S PA, site plan application for exterior renovations, 42 Williams Avenue. Evening, sir.
Hello, Commissioner, my name's Brian Wells, I'm a builder in town.
Brian.
How you doing? I'm here representing Johnny for 42 Williams Ave. A., in trying to get the approval for the out, exterior facade. Interior's already been approved, and the building permits are already in place.
Questions from the commission?
I know there's some questions, I thought, that were brought up with some of the signage, I think.
Yep.
Have you had a chance to review those, those comments?
Yep.
You can respond?
All the signage is, and lots of it, you know, compared to the...
Okay.
They clarified the signage size.
Okay.
And then they clarified and provided details of the sight lighting.
Okay.
So the only elements that are gonna be lit are, are going to be the lanterns on the front entrance, and then there's gonna be some light, the existing lighting above the sign where the Ignatius Pizza is, there are three...
Other like, yeah.
Yeah, there are three...
Other three things.
Yeah.
Three lights shining down onto the sign, so those are gonna remain.
Okay.
And then there's gonna be no exterior lighting on the rest of the facade until the front entrance. They clarified that because the renderings looked like it was being lit.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, too.
What's the total height of the building, including the chimney?
That I do not know, it's all existing.
No change, that's existing.
It's all existing.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yeah, this is the old Dunkin' Donuts building.
Yep.
Yeah, Ignatius Pizza. Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's right, yeah. But it was the old Dunkin'.
I'm just not recognizing, there's so much change, I'm not recognizing.
I know, I know, you have to really, really look for the old pizza place. What's the duration of the project, Brian?
Open to me, open for June.
Extensive interior renovations?
Yeah.
In addition, yeah. What's the seating capacity?
I think it's 56, around that.
Is it, is it a bigger dining room than, than what had existed with the...
No, it's actually smaller.
Smaller?
Yeah.
Okay. Mostly takeout?
No, I mean, there's, you know, it's gonna be both. They're keeping the, you know, takeout window at the moment, they're not using it to start, that's probably gonna be used in the near future.
Like drive-through?
Yeah, they, there's an existing drive-through.
No, no, there's, so they're, you're gonna do drive-through?
There's a drive-through from the Dunkin' Donuts.
No, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, is he, are they gonna do drive-through? Like, I know there's, there's a drive-through there.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see what you're questioning.
Yeah, I just, okay, 'cause I do remember when we were talking about Ignatius Pizza, we had questions, and they were like, no, we're not gonna use the drive-through, and we were happy with that, so... I don't know, but when they come back with a drive-through, do they have to come back before us?
It's existing.
Okay.
It's existing.
Existing, okay.
Yeah.
When they, when they came in for their original permit, they said that they weren't gonna use the drive-through, but they can open it at any time without a change.
Okay, so it's existence, like...
Yeah. It's the seating that, if the seating number changes beyond what was originally approved, then we have to come back and do the parking calculations all over again. But it's staying at the pre-approved levels for Ignatius, so...
Okay. Commission have any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, in the rendition that I'm looking at, it's kinda like the picture part.
Yep.
On the side that would be facing Route 1.
Yep.
So the long side, there's this big kind of blue, is that a patio, an outdoor patio? Is that gonna be as...
So there's an existing concrete patio right now. There's no exterior seating as of, on the plan right now, and if that does evolve, we'll be back here and, for approval for that.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Commission have any other questions of Mr. Wells? Hearing none, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of McDuff Associates?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application from McDuff Associates for the site plan application with no stipulations.
Second.
Moved by Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion? Are there any conditions at all on that? Not?
No.
Okay. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item PG 2506BR. Is it Maroni Excavation or Marone?
Marone.
Marone Excavation Inc. And Peter, are you here to represent us this evening? This is a bond release for subdivision, the road name was King Fisher Webb, and I believe it's complete and inspected by the town engineer, am I correct?
Yep.
Unusual that one comes forth the first time, and there aren't a long list of items that are yet to be complete, but if I read it correctly, the town engineer's satisfied with this, correct? Anyone have any questions of the applicant? If there are none, what's the commission's pleasure on the bond release of Marone Excavation Inc.?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the bond reduction and release application Maroni, of Marone, as submitted with no stipulation.
Motion to approve by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Chair second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair abstains, any, any opposition? None? Motion passes. Thank you, Peter, good evening.
Much appreciated.
Next item is 7D, PG 250, 7SPA JDM Electric Company, John McCully. Evening, John. I'm fine, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Please proceed.
John Mchely, I'm here to, obviously you've gotten the application, I'm in the process of purchasing 201 North Main Street to move my business there. I currently operate on 21 Jackson Avenue in Mystic. We do a high-end audio retail shop there. I'm gonna move the shop to Main Street. Nothing really exciting.
Does everybody have the plans that were handed out at the last meeting? Any questions of the applicant? This is a former restaurant, correct?
It is, yeah.
And you're converting it into an office for yourself?
I'm gonna have an office there, but the main floor that was a restaurant, eating floor, is gonna be a showroom.
Questions from the commission?
No.
No questions? Clifton?
Nope, I only have two comments on the storage containers and the mounting details for the signage. The signage, John sent to me, I think on Friday, so I have that. The storage containers, I have an item detail for what that looks like, so both those comments are addressed.
What will the signage still pack?
Sign packages on the...
Right, right in the, tell them the package.
Any further questions of the applicant? If not, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of JDM Electric at 201 North Main, Stonington?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan application for JDM Electric Company with the following two stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town planner, and number two, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Motion approved with conditions by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morrison, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains. Evening, John. Take care.
I'd like to second all this.
Good.
Okay.
Chuck, go. Chuck, I guess?
Next item is moved to March 18th?
Correct, and I'd ask item 8F be moved to the end of the meeting after public hearings?
Okay, without objection, we're gonna move item F, 8F, to the end of the meeting, and that'll move everything else along for everybody.
We need a motion to do that, or we can just do it?
No one has it, any objections?
No.
Okay, then item 8F, if you're here for that, will be moved to the end of the agenda after public hearing. Okay, so that, that ends Old Business, brings us to item 9A, public hearings. And for the record, all of the regular members will be seated for the public hearings this evening, and the way we operate the public hearings this evening is, we'll read the legal notice, public hearing will be open, applicant will make his presentation. Following the applicant's presentation, commissioners will ask questions, staff will report, and then it will be open to the public to make statements either for or against, or just a general statement on the application. And we have a sign-up sheet if you wish to speak on any of these public hearings, there's three of them this evening, they're on the agenda. Then we ask that you, you sign up to, to speak, and you'll be recognized. The applicant will have an opportunity to rebut, and we'll go back and forth with rebuttal until everyone has concluded their piece. So if, Lynn, if you'd read the public hearing?
Sir, we'd like to open up application PG 2503 MA plus CAM Mystic Seaport Museum. Mack Amendment and Coastal Area Management Review under approved master plan PG 2234 ZC for minor site changes. Property is located at 75 Greedmanville Avenue, Mystic, MBL 173-1-1, and other properties located in the MHD Zone.
Thank you very much. Motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion open, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Morrison. Anyone have any questions on it? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Sir, please identify yourself, although we all know who you are.
Good evening, everyone, Chad Cross with Kemp Cross Manscaped Architecture, happy to be back in front of you again.
Evening, Chad.
Tonight, we're here on behalf of the Seaport for new members or new alternates that haven't been here before. The Seaport is in the MHD Zone, it was a zone specifically created for the Seaport a number of years ago, because previous to that, they were in a residential zone, so it made changes within their property very difficult. However, the way it was written, any change that we do within the property basically becomes a zone change rewrite. This is the, now the ninth time we're back in front of you for an update to the zone. We have done some incrementally, we were here not too long ago for an administrative approval, one of that's also getting incorporated in this tonight. As far as all the changes we've done, this is probably the simplest one that we've done for quite a while. It's basically spurred because within the Rossi Mill, there's an area that we're looking to convert into technically a kitchen, it won't be used to produce any hot food, but it'll be receiving cold produce, washing and storage of those sorts of goods. That is in support of the Delamar Hotel, which is almost finished construction across the street. There was a similar relationship when Latitude Restaurants was operating out of there, they had receiving there, shipping and receiving in the Rossi Building, however, it was all dry goods. And so there was an assumption made during the process, the Delamar folks thought they could just use it the same as Latitude had been using it, however, with the handling of food, Leglike then used it as a kitchen, and so that kitchen use is a new use within the building that doesn't currently exist. So that's why we're here basically tonight, is for that small kitchen within the Rossi Mill in an area that's very similar as far as square footage of how the shipping and receiving went for Latitude's. And since we're in front of you for that, we throw on a bunch of the little incidentals around campus to go along with it. So running through the list, basically, most of them, the 9.1 is, is the kitchen, 9.2, 9.3 are dumpsters, 9.4, that was the administrative review that we were in front of you a few months ago for the temporary storage of a tent. We moved it from, it previously been approved over here, we moved over there to store the boats while the Rossi Boat Hall project was underway. We just put it on the plan to now make it officially part of the master plan as opposed to just that administrative review. 9.5 is some more dumpster locations, 9.6 is some dumpster locations, and then 9.7 is basically two ADA Egress locks out of the Rossi Mill building, just to try to improve the access, the emergency access out of the boat hall area and, and back to level ground. Because we, we've made it accessible at the main entrance, there was a side entrance that once we did a detailed study, that was an existing ADA access, but we found... we found that some of the sidewalk actually exceeded the slopes, so we're going to renovate that. And then on the north side, within the loading dock, we had to kind of reorient how that ramp went in order to make it an accessible egress from the building as well. So, very simple, in my opinion, but happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Yeah, I don't know. This is probably more of a question for Clifton, but giving permission for a kitchen and food preparation area, even though we've said there's no cooking, I totally understand that.
Yep.
Is there some kind of underlying other changes when we say kitchen, or are we, because this is in Marine Heritage District, and we can be very specific, we can say this is only be, this kitchen can only be used for cold storage, and that's it? No food prep, et cetera? I just want to be very clear that this is not later on, because this tends to happen.
Yep, that's right.
This then comes, becomes a full-blown kitchen, right?
Fast food restaurant.
Right, exactly. And it does tend to happen here.
In the condition that's written in, that there is no hot food prep whatsoever, and if that was to come up, we'd have to be back and forth in front of you for that application.
But even cold food prep, meaning ice cream, I, you know, I just want to be sure.
Lynn, that was a comment from the zoning enforcement officer, and it's added as a stipulation.
Okay, all right.
And it doesn't imply food service can happen out of that space either, solely for the purpose of the Delmar Hotel. And it's their responsibility to get it from that location over across the street.
Correct.
And how do they do that?
I just have, I have a question on the dumpster locations.
Yep.
Are there going to be screened?
Yes. All will be screened.
How will they be screened?
All with solid screens. What we would do is come back on a case-by-case basis. None of these are actually proposed to be built currently, right? But we're asking permission. Some of them, they're existing dumpster locations that hadn't been, they've just always been there. They've never been on a plan. They've never been formally approved, so we're just codifying them. And other places like down here by, behind the Thompson Building, that's the utility area already. It would make sense to be able to put dumpsters there if they need them. Currently, the dumpsters used to be closer to the river for boaters to be able to dispose of their things, so we're moving them around.
These look like they're closer to the residences. You pointed to some that were further east there.
So, there's dumpsters that currently exist here.
Okay.
That we're just codifying, right?
Okay.
And those would be...
Okay, so those are existing, just placed on the plan?
Yep. And then there's, you know, those, that would be a potentially new location. Again, it's totally kind of confined within Rossi. There's existing dumpsters already over here. We're just codifying.
Okay, so they're existing, and you are going to screen them?
And we will do full screening on all.
Okay.
And what I would say is the screening will probably depend on context sensitive locations, right? If it's an area that can't be seen, it'll be a utility screening. And an area down here where it's potential to be seen by the public or a visitor, we do, you know, a more...
A more attractive enclosure.
Correct.
Okay.
Are they going to be any larger than they currently are?
No.
Why is that dumpster being added for the hotel of the Rossi Building itself?
Well, it's a combination of how they handle all of the trash on site. Some of it, you'll recall, for the hotel itself, they specifically have a building around it. We anticipate that, based on how the trash service within Stonington works, it's not like what the Delmar was used to and other locations that are more urban, and they get picked up more frequently. So, they're going to have to have some extra space, which is why we started looking at those other locations as possible options as well.
So, how much food are we talking about being thrown out in the dumpster?
They have a full recycling program that I won't get into, but they do do that through all their food service. The restaurant itself is a smaller footprint than the Latitude Restaurant that was there, as far as if you're looking for volume.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, causing a problem now, because, okay.
Any other questions, or Mr. Frost?
How does the food thing get across the street?
That's always the question. They have a runner service that runs it back and forth, just like the valet service.
Like in a van?
Yeah, a little van, a little cart, if you, almost like a glorified golf cart that runs back and forth.
They have gators down there, too.
The Seaport uses gators to get around and all that. For the most part...
No, it's not a gator, though.
It's kind of a, the hope is that it's a one...
Not air-conditioned.
You know, a once-a-day kind of trip. When service isn't being served in the hotel, they can kind of restock everything from that area, and then be done for the day. They're not preparing a Caesar salad and running it across the street.
Special order.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Clifton?
Candy asked all those questions from her decades in food service.
Yes.
And your conditions are all in your recommendations, correct?
Yeah, there's a DEP condition about anchoring down or removing the dumpsters in flood zone. We're fine with that condition as well.
And you agree to all the conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. If there are no other questions, can we open it to public input?
Yep.
Okay. So, I have two signed up here. Carlene, I believe you're first on the list. Good evening.
When recognizing this Carlene Donarumo, I quickly looked at this application, and I was really confused about it, because it's being first portrayed as a kitchens, as a storage area, but then when you get to page two of eight, it starts mentioning food prep. And tonight, we're being told it's a kitchen. So, it seems to me, I guess, that it didn't plan well for the Delmar Hotel, for the food situation. And being in food prep, or knowing about food prep, it seems to me you need a sink to wash, you need to wash the vegetables and the fruits, and maybe your meats have to be washed or cooked a little bit. Is there going to be a stove over here? I mean, these questions are not being answered, and that's, to me, what a kitchen is. So, I think you need to get a little bit more clarification from the applicant. And as far as transportation and on Route 27, it seems to me with things going back and forth and adjusting the light so they can get across the street, it's going to have a big inflammation implication on Route 27, on the traffic. And also, if there's any cooking in that kitchen, there's possible odors coming from the cooking, if it's going to be cooking, and that could affect the neighbors. So, I think you're on the right track, that you probably really do need some better clarification about what's going on. And the letter to the neighbors at first flush tells them there was going to be a kitchen and food preparation there. But when I was reading that application from the beginning, that was not very clear at all. I was just very confused. I hope we can get some clarification.
Thank you. Steve, Steve, I, if you pronounce your last name for me, I...
Sure.
Evening, Steve.
Thank you.
Just say your name and address on the record.
Steve Hobacon, 19 Velvet Lane. I could not see where these dumpsters are going to be located. I know where some of them are, so could you show me where the dumpsters are going to be located?
We have existing dumpsters there, there. We have potential new dumpster location there.
Uh-huh.
And a potential, yeah, new ones there, behind Rossi.
So, is there food going in any of these, specifically this one, the R93 and the R92?
There could be cold, like lettuce and things like that that could definitely go in there as a, yeah, yes.
Thank you. I live on Velvet Lane, the end of it, so I'm right by the Velvet Mill. But before I get started, my neighbor Mary Hendricks wrote a letter. She's not able to come here tonight, so I'd like to read the letter, and she provided a number of copies for the commission. Would you like the copies?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you. I don't have a bunch here, so I'll share with Gary.
So, this is from Mary. She lives at 20 Rossi Street, Mystic. "To whom it may concern, the Rossi Mill National Registered District is composed of 51 mostly residential properties along Greenvale Avenue and streets adjacent. It is a separate entity from the Mystic Bridge National Registered District. It represents Mystic's changing economy from shipbuilding and marine time commerce to an industrial one. In 1897, the Mystic Industrial Company was formed to attract manufacturing to the area. The next year, the Rossi Brothers began their organization of the textile mill and recruited skilled labor from Italy and Germany. Those workers built their own homes and created their own social clubs within close proximity to their workplace. The Mystic Seaport has well represented the 1850s in its outdoor historic replica village. I am hopeful they will continue and expand their involvement in our town's history, including that of the early 20th century. I'm hopeful this history timeline would incorporate the immigration stories of the Rossi Velvet Mill manufacturing and its workers, which lived and worked at the mill. The neighborhood is living history. It is fragile. It's situated close to the highway and multiple tourist destinations. It sees its traffic, its share of traffic. Unlike the aquarium, which abuts commercial property on the highway, Mystic Seaport is surrounded by domestic homes. The area, once called Greenvale, is mostly an intact neighborhood representing the mill's workers. If it loses its identity due to the unsympathetic development, so goes this important history. I caution that the town should look with care that nothing will be detrimental to the feel of this neighborhood, which abuts the Mystic Heritage District in, is a complement to the village atmosphere of the Mystic Seaport. Our neighborhood, which encompasses the entrance to our beautiful town from Elm Grove Cemetery to the German Club, it is a stretch of land incorporating an amazing continuous story of our town's development from, to the marine time, to the creation of an industrial base, to tourism. I understand that the Seaport needs to expand its museum to include proper exhibition space for its boats, but please do this with respect for adjacent properties and harmonize its development of the Rossi Velvet Mill with all the properties within the Rossi Mill National Registered District. It makes sense to complete our town's history story. Mary Kay Hendrickson."
Do you know if, is the Rossi Building part of the Rossi Mill National Registered District?
It is.
So, it's part, so that portion of the Seaport is part of the National, the Rossi Mill National Registration District?
Absolutely.
And does that district have any regulations defining what can and cannot be done?
No. Not locally, right? We do have to go talk to shippo from time to time, depending on what's being done.
Okay.
But I will say, as far as that letter goes, I have to support all of those comments. And that was really addressed towards, in my opinion, the bigger Rossi Mill project, which has been handled twice before this committee and not subject to what we're hearing. The boat hall renovation and the adaptive reuse of that building is really what keeps that building going forward, and I think was done, in my opinion, in a responsible way to be able to create a new use for that building and continue the history into the future. So, I just think those comments might have been more addressed towards the overall boat hall project as opposed to a kitchen within.
I just didn't know.
Well, I gave her a copy. She did not receive this letter from the Seaport, so I gave her a copy of it, and then she wrote this, so. I have, in addition to this, I have a couple or three comments. First of all, for the dumpsters, I don't think they should be putting food for the dumpsters near the neighborhood. So, if, for example, the Seaport said, "We're not going to be putting any food in this one or this one," or things that could smell, you know, I would personally not object to it. But if, but if they are, I can smell things from the Seaport. For example, they have an oil tank here. I can, and that's my house right there. I can smell the oil all the time. So, that's beyond this dumpster. This dumpster is for servicing this quantity hut, and they're normally putting wood scraps and whatever in there. They're not putting food or materials that decay. So, I would say that the dumpsters should not contain materials that decay.
Food waste, is what you're saying.
Food waste, yeah, that are close to the neighborhood. I understand you have to have dumpsters near the restaurant, but, and my second comment is, I don't think they should have a kitchen in the Rossi Mill. They just built a large restaurant across the street. It looks far bigger than the Siemens Inn, and now they're talking about expanding that and putting a kitchen there. So, I don't, and the letter said kitchen and food preparation area. So, I don't think they should have a kitchen there when they built this large restaurant to replace the Siemens Inn across the street. And we have a continuous problem with the Seaport and traffic coming out onto Velvet Lane. That parking lot, it was agreed to, would not empty out into Velvet Lane. But what happens oftentimes is traffic from that parking lot just empties out into Velvet Lane. Matter of fact, during large events, it seems like Velvet Lane becomes part of the parking lot. There's no control. There's a couple of signs, and that's it. At one time, there was a chain link fence, which was removed, and they put a gate, a wooden gate there that was moved daily, and then it fell apart. I mean, they're not, the Seaport is not in compliance with the traffic going down Velvet Lane from the parking lot. So, but my thought as a neighbor is no to the food in the dumpsters. I think it's a good idea to screen dumpsters, but I just don't think they should put any food in there, and no to the kitchen and food preparation area. To give you an idea, when I first, when they first talked about this, Admiral Thiessen would tell people that the Velvet Mill is just for cold storage. There's going to be no plans for anything else there. Now, we have a large exhibit space. They're talking about food preparation and other things. So, we've come a long way, and I think in general, that parking lot is undersized for the activities that are being planned in that area. You got the hotel up across the street, the Siemens Inn. You now have an exhibit space there, and they're adding food preparation. And my neighbor made an excellent point about the traffic coming down 27, and additional people are crossing the street, so, which will impact traffic. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment on this application? If no one else signed up, does the applicant wish any rebuttal time?
Yes, please. As far as comments from... I'll apologize if you didn't think that the kitchen was clear. We did note in our project description, the very first thing is kitchen and food preparation area within Rossi Mill. And that was the very first description of Project R91.
And she's in your letter.
And in the letter, it's definitely, you know, we, again, I feel it's, the way it's designed on the plans, to me, it's not a kitchen. It's, it's a cold storage area that happens to have a sink, that when they bring in produce, gets washed before it goes into storage.
One of the questions was, is there a stove?
There is no stove.
Okay.
There is no hot food prep whatsoever.
No food prep.
No food prep. It's... No food prep. It's, the plans, the plans show, right, that there's no hot food, there is cold food because you're getting lettuce, you're getting cold foods, you're getting wine and dry goods and all those sorts of things.
But not prep. It says here in Part 2A.
We have to call it, there's definitions that are given split, right? So Ledgely calls this a kitchen. So we have to tell you that we're putting in a kitchen and then we'll agree to the fact that we're not doing any sorts of hot food prep whatsoever. But we're bringing in goods and they're handled on the plan in a very small countertop space that has a sink that then processes those goods before they can go into the cold storage or the food.
Okay, but that's not what your application says. Part 2A, Description of Proposed Project or Activities.
Yep.
The only change of use is changing a restaurant dry goods storage area, which to me is just shelving dry goods.
Yep.
To a restaurant food receiving.
Yep.
In storage area. It says nothing about any kind of prep, washing, anything. You get the cabbage, you put it on a shelf or in a refrigerator, the cabbage moves across the street, they wash it, they cut it, they do whatever. That's what your application says. That's not what you're saying.
Yeah, and that's how they intend.
Okay, but you just said they would wash it.
Well, they have the potential because there is a sink there.
Because Ledgely demands.
Yeah, Ledgely will have to inspect.
The health code demands.
The health code is what's making us call this a kitchen as opposed to a food storage area, right? And so that Ledgely has to be able to come in and inspect this because there's food that can go bad that's being stored there. And so, and under their definition, it's called a kitchen. And so, because that use wasn't in Rossi Mill previously, all that Latitude does, they got all their dry goods, they did get some, you know.
Liquor.
Liquor, all that, all that sort of stuff came in, was shelved and then was brought across the street. And so that change of use is what's made us come before you, right? But they do not intend to use it as a prep kitchen. They're not going to be getting things ready for plating and then running plates across the street. All of that happens across the street in the kitchen, the true kitchen, which is in Rossi Mill. This is their storage area where they can get a large, you know, semi truck can back in there a lot easier, offload all those goods, and then they can bring them across the street in a smaller utility vehicle, which I think makes sense and lessens the impact of traffic and, you know, backups on Route 27.
I'm going to ask you a couple of very, very clear questions.
Okay.
You get lettuce, right? It's dirty, I'm assuming. The outer leaves have to be shed.
Yep.
Before you bring them across the street?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Sure.
And you're going to wash the head of lettuce and the outer leaves are going to go where?
Into our garbage.
Into the garbage.
Yes.
You get a bushel of ears of corn.
Yes.
You're going to shuck them?
Yeah.
Okay?
Could be, yes.
Bring them across the street, unshocked?
Correct.
And then the garbage is going to go in the dumpster?
Along with all the materials that that might have been shipped in.
Okay, to me, that's food prep. Sorry, that's food prep. That's not storage. It's food prep.
Well, if you'd like us to amend the description to include food prep and without anything in hot food prep.
Preparation slash kitchen uses.
Not on Description of Proposed Project and Activity.
We're at R91, Project Commission, and the section to last sentence says the museum seeks to utilize 2,300 square feet of interior space for food preparation slash kitchen uses. She's reading the CAM application.
Yeah, oh, it could be, the CAM application, yes. Maybe the text didn't get.
Okay, so you're, we're looking at different things on the same application.
Yeah, I understand.
Saying different uses.
I can understand how you would raise the question. But it is there.
And I'm just trying to be very honest with you. The intent is not to do cooking because that would be a whole different issue as far as planting and all sorts of things.
Yeah, there's no stove.
No stove.
And you're not plating anything.
Correct.
For service.
Correct.
It's receiving.
Correct.
Minor processing.
And that's why the owner, the Delamar, incorrectly assumed that they'd be able to basically use the same space that Latitude's had been using for their kind of receiving and processing of goods. They assumed they could do the same thing. When they went to the town hall with the plan that became a kitchen, because there was a sink there and Ledgely said, "Oh, that's now a kitchen," it necessitated a full zone change in order to allow that sink.
Yeah, Ledgely, all the food handling rules have changed.
Yes. So, that's my, that's my answer for, let's hear. And so I do apologize if it was unclear in the application. We are not cooking. It is simply receiving. Yes, there will be some washing of vegetable produce as they come in. The, they get unboxed from their crates and put into smaller containers for taking across. But no stove, no hot prep. So therefore, no, should not be any significant cooking orders whatsoever because it's just handling the goods. The Route 27 crossing, again, the change, in our opinion, there shouldn't be much change because this was how it was done before when Latitude's was operating and it's going to be done the same now where you're running shuttling things back and forth. We think that should hopefully happen better, given that you can do that once a day instead of having a semi truck back in all the way down the North Laneway and block the whole intersection for a while. You can just have somebody making the crossing while the signal is good for pedestrians to go back and forth and run the goods back and forth. Addressing the letter, we fully appreciate that it is in, is in a historic district and a third of the two separate districts. Love the immigration story that the Rossi Building tells and the neighborhoods around it. I consider myself a little fragment of that story because actually, one of my professors at UConn came and lived in that neighborhood because his dad was a mason, right? And then he went and formed the program at UConn in which I then graduated from. The Seaport has, you can just step, oh, Ken, no, you stepped out. The Seaport has actually done exhibits on that immigration story and how tariffs actually were the things that actually started that whole thing. It was, there was tariffs on soap goods that created the construction of that. And they really are hoping and trying to do nothing detrimental to the building, but really find an adaptive reuse for that. And lastly, the other comments, you know, as far as should they have a kitchen, that's why we're here tonight. Again, I don't really think it's a kitchen. I think it's a small step up from the food receiving that it was to food receiving that has some vegetable washing that goes along with it. It's not a drastic change. It's not a traffic generator. It's not a quality of life that's going to ruin the neighborhood by having a single sink in that area to be able to wash the vegetables. The parking lot exit on Velvet Lane is an issue we will continue to work with the neighbors on, is what I would say. We definitely want to keep the public from using that as an exit. The one thing I'll openly warn you on as part of the application for the Delamar, right, one of the requirements that you guys put on, as well as the Traffic Commission put on, was that the valets circulate through Velvet Lane. So the valet parks up there and then comes back around to drop cars back off through Velvet Lane. We won't let the public use that, right? But by coordinating off the parking and keeping the public further away from that exit, hopefully less people in the public would find that and use that. But we'll continue to have that conversation.
Is there a way that could be gated for the valet? They have a gate that the valet can operate and no one else can get out except the valet?
We could have that conversation. We hadn't, that was not, was not a condition of any of those approvals, but we can certainly have that conversation if the problem.
I'm sorry, proceed.
And I guess I just reiterate the fact that, you know, we think the traffic, traffic crossing gets reduced by having just that one runner run back and forth as opposed to semi trucks back and, back and forth in the mall.
Quick question, Chad. Will the Seaport stipulate to no food waste in any of the dumpsters except the one directly behind the food storage area?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they can't, they can't accept any dumpster, right? Because they have a massive operation and there are more dumpsters, right? We've identified all the ones kind of on the northern half. There are some others down here. That's, that's.
I'm talking about the ones closest to the residences.
Well, I guess.
The ones we just talked about.
There was a trash compactor here that in proximity wise could be just as close to some of those residents as this one could be. That served everything that came out of Latitude's restaurant.
Talking about the dumpsters that you have cited on the East Italy side of the site right now.
This one?
We're just, we're talking about as a subject of this application.
Yeah, I was, nine, so.
Nine, two, and nine, three.
Well, nine, three would definitely, I mean, nine, three is within the confines of the Rossi Mill. And I would say.
Nine, two.
Right, nine, two, sorry, nine, two. Nine, three.
It's just lumber.
It's just lumber.
Yes.
So we can have all food waste going into this one. And no food waste can go into this one.
There is no food waste going into.
Okay.
So you'd agree to that stipulation?
Yep.
Okay. There's a question though? I don't know if we can make that stipulation.
You can't stipulate that.
Even in.
What if the applicant, what if the applicant offers it?
Yes, nicely.
What if the application, applicant offers it?
You can, you can agree on the, voluntarily, you can agree on the voluntary usage of that, but you can't stipulate it.
Okay. All right.
It falls under nuisance law.
Okay, so, so perhaps we can get a letter from the Seaport agreeing that no food waste will be in there. And we won't stipulate it, but there's an agreement that we will receive that letter.
You can update your recycling trash plan for the Delmar.
Another way to do it, that's fine.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, Clifton.
How often is the Delmar going to have trash removal?
They are picked up the same.
Three to five days a week.
Three to five days a week, so, but not on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so.
No, Sunday, Saturday, and Sunday, definitely. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's picked up.
Same as the Seaport, please.
I think, but I think somebody from the Public Affairs Desk.
Yes, ma'am.
I just suddenly.
Just identify yourself, please. That's okay.
Marilyn Dalton. I live at 130.
Good evening.
Greenvale. Thank you. Good evening. I'm right on the corner of Greenvale and Velvet Lane. Anyway, all of a sudden, I was a little surprised all of a sudden to hear that there's this, going to be this valet has to have a circular, be able to circle around on to Velvet Lane. I mean, this could change a lot.
That was, that was a separate application that's been approved two applications ago. And it went through the same public hearing notice process as part of a larger project. Quite honestly, that was when we were redeveloping, doing the entire project.
How, how much is this going to affect, how often are they going to be driving down? What's going off around all the time?
Well, it's, it's a very small boutique hotel with a limited number of rooms, so we don't expect to have a high volume of traffic going through there. But that's the way that the DOT required the egress of those valet cars because they would not allow for a left-hand turn back onto the site.
Oh, anyway, I'm a little surprised at that.
Yep.
Did that answer your question, Marilyn?
Well, it just says they were doing it. So, I mean.
It was stipulated by the DOT, the Department of.
These applications get.
I keep wondering how much, I mean, how much traffic this is going to be. Well, it sounds like it's done, so.
These applications, after they come to us, go to the State Traffic Commission. And the State Traffic Commission reviews the traffic circulation and stipulates things like this and adds it to the application. So, so, you know, it's, it's, it's by the State Traffic Commission that it was stipulated.
I guess my concern is that, you know, we're just reading this thing about changing the neighborhood and the, you know, it's a historical neighborhood and, I mean, that could change it, in my opinion, but I guess, it's always been decided.
Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Does the applicant require any further time for rebuttal? Any further time for rebuttal?
I'm sorry, but do you know how, I mean, how, how much traffic is going to be going around?
Again, pardon.
Big trucks, little trucks?
No, no big.
Little trucks, I mean, all day long? How many trucks?
It's, it's just valet for people that park at the hotel.
Well, that's all day long, valet parking, all day long.
It could potentially be, yes, but.
So that's a lot of traffic.
Well, we had a, again, at the time that it was done and approved, there was a traffic engineering report that had the, those possible counts in it. Off the top of my head, I cannot possibly remember what they were.
Well, anyway, I didn't get a letter to come to the meeting about that.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't recall receiving the letter either.
It was the only letter I got.
It's really not a subject of this, before us, so, so we can't, we can't consider it. So it's, it's not a subject of this application, I'm sorry.
But it was fully noticed, just like this one was.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Thank you all for your input. Clifton, any further comments?
No, we added the stipulations for Connecticut Deep and for the hot food or kitchen prep. So that should cover everything in the future from any hot food preparation cooking. If that has to change, that will come back before the commission.
Okay.
The, I think, in order to address your question, Chuck, about the dumpster stipulation, you could add a stipulation saying they will update their maintenance or disposal plan to accommodate the change.
Thank you for that suggestion.
I think that should be sufficient to address.
But thank you for preventing us from doing something that would have made it, you know, meaningless.
You just can't tell people what they can put in, what trash can, so, that's the only reason why I said it.
Okay. Unless there are any further questions from the commission, I think we're at a point where we can close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing for this application.
Motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is? Any discussion? All in favor?
You know, I just have to say, I feel like as the Seaport changes and evolves and already been said, you've come back numerous times in a relatively short period of time, it's baby steps, baby steps, baby steps. And it's infringing on the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's not compatible with the neighborhood. And yeah, you look at each baby step, you look at it individually, maybe you say, "Oh, it's just a little thing, it's not a big deal." But I'm, I feel as if it's just building, 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 building. And this is no longer compatible with the neighborhood. You've got people who are coming here saying that they're, they're, you know, they're worried about the trash, they're worried about the smell, they're worried about the pickup, the trash pickup now coming, you know, five days a week, whereas before it was just wood, it probably wasn't coming five days a week, the wood. You know, it's a tight, tight neighborhood. And that velvet street, I don't even think it's, it's got more potholes in it, there's no shoulder, there's no sidewalk. It's a very narrow old street. And I just think, you know, it's something we need to consider because, again, baby steps, baby steps, but all of a sudden now, everything's changed and it does impact the neighborhood. And is this the breaking point or was it two steps back, but we didn't realize we were at the breaking point? I'm not sure. But I think we need to consider it.
Understood. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So is that one, two, three ayes and one nay?
Yeah.
Motion passes. A chair stays. Motion passes. Thank you.
Isn't that just to close the hearing? That's just to close the public hearing. So you don't, you didn't want to close the public hearing either?
I'm sorry, we should close the public.
No, that's, that's what the motion was.
I'm sorry.
It wasn't on the applications or anything.
I apologize.
It was just to close the hearing.
My mistake.
Yep.
My mistake. What's your pleasure on the application?
Quick question to Clifton, so it looks like there would be one, two, three, four, five decisions we would need to make on this.
You can lump them.
You can lump them, okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following application, the following items on this application. First, the consistency with the plan of conservation and development. Second is consistency with zoning regulation 10 dot 2 dot 3. Three is concerning the zoning map amendment application. Four is concerning the site plan application. And five is concerning the coastal area management application with the following three stipulations. One, the applicant shall address the outstanding comments for the satisfaction of the town engineer, town planner, and CTD. Number two, should the applicant expand a hot food preparation cooking, approval will be required by additional agencies. And number three, that the applicant will update their maintenance and ref-. maintenance and refuse disposal plan to address dumpster usage that was discussed in the, and agreed to in the meeting, if that fulfills that last.
So, a motion to, to pass five administrative matters with stipulations to include one additional stipulation that the applicant has agreed to, to amend their solid waste management plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, thank you, Commissioner Marcy. Any discussion on this motion?
I think I've already said everything.
No, just, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so, three in favor, one opposed, Chair Staines, motion passes. Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to item 9B. Len, would you read the notice, please?
Sure. This is to open a public hearing of PZ 2505, or 5, SUPG Development LLC, special use permit application for amendments to previously approved permit, PZ 2018 SUP, to include building height adjustments and associated site improvements. Property is located at 32 Broadway Avenue Mystic, MBL 174-19-1. Property is located in the LS5 Zone.
Thank you, Len. Same procedures are in effect for this public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak? If you could take your discussion outside, please, thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak on this application? Is there a sign-up sheet in the back, Clifton? Or do we have it here?
I need to--
I got both of them.
Okay. Motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is open. So we have Sergio Terenzio here, representing the applicant. Evening, sir.
Evening. For the record, Sergio Terenzio, Terenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. The application before you this evening is actually a modification to a previous permit approval that we obtained some time ago for the property of 32 Broad, Broadway, for a, a hotel. What a long, strange trip it's been. We've gone back and forth, I don't need to go into the history, I think you all were here for it in the last six months or so, that, what made this, the ability to come back into for this modification, for specifically the height relief by special use permit. That being said, what's in front of you this evening are, is for some site modifications. I can go over what those are. I believe they're relatively minor and perfunctory type, utilitarian type, type modifications to the site in order for the functionality of the building. With me this evening is Mark Camo, our project architect, and he can get into more of the details on the, the building design, and any questions you may have with regards to that, and the necessity of the, the height relief that we were seeking for two of the components on the roof, one being the, the elevator, and the other being some mechanicals that have been mounted up there. Just a little background, it was the intent of the applicant to come in for this modification at some point during the construction, when they figured out that, that this relief would be needed, and some of the site modifications were required. Unfortunately, as we were waiting to come before you for one change, as opposed to drips and drabs of, can we, gotta change this, gotta change that, the regulatory, the, the, your, your regulations changed in that process while we were under construction, and thankfully, that has been put, the, the special permit allowances for the height relief have been put back in, which allows us to be here for that particular part of this application. The plan that I have up in front of you right now is the approved plan, signed by the planning and zoning chair. I just highlighted some of the things that, under, under the approved plan, which are changing as far as the site goes. I'll bring your attention to, there's this, what we, we had envisioned here was what we called a green wall, a live green wall. It was a bit of an imposing structure, it was structural in nature, and it was going to be a vertical wall, some, I think 30 feet tall potentially, I think it was, maybe taller, Mark, you may recall, but it was a pretty imposing structure to block out the neighboring property. My, my client was concerned that, that, that the building behind him being in close proximity, that there would be, it could be painted different colors, it could be, put, a mural could be put on it, and he wanted to make sure that that was shielded from view for his property. I, I point that out because we're gonna be changing that under this application to, to a softer vegetative screening, as opposed to the, the wall. The wall is gonna have vegetation growing on it, but we've since modified that, which I'll show you the next, okay. Bring your attention to some of the storage bins for, I believe, for the, the trash receptacles that are gonna be behind the building, on the alleyway between the, the budding property. That's important, we've, we've relocated those as well. We haven't changed anything with respect to the, the number of rooms for the building, the parking has remained the same, the integrity of the stormwater management, all of that remains intact. Nothing that has changed with respect to the integrity of the site, the utilities which serve it, the traffic flow patterns, where people park, ADA spaces, and the flow through the building. What has changed, I've highlighted here in yellow, that, that green wall, or living wall, has been replaced with a row of, of, of trees, narrow columnar-type trees, to fit in that space, that, that should grow relatively tall and provide a visual screen to the building behind. The trash receptacles, receptacles have been relocated southerly, and there's a, an electrical service meter that required a stair and a platform that the utility company required. That structure meets all the setback requirements and is near, is, is necessary in order to get the electrical utility service in, at that location. The, the building has not been able to be permanently powered, because the power company won't put in their service until that is, until that access and that platform goes in. So we have been awaiting, obviously, the zoning amendment so that we could get in front of you to do this change in addition to the others in one go-around. Those trash receptacles will be, will still be placed behind the building and underneath that platform, so they'll be even further screened from view based on that they'll be underneath that platform. And then there's, once again, other utilities that were required to be outside, there's two propane tanks. Those can be placed on either a, a concrete slab or some other type of sturdy surface, but those are at, at grade, above grade tanks, there'll be two of them to service the building, can easily be accessed from the parking lot. I believe there's a comment from the town engineer that we add some bollards in front of there just for their protection from any vehiculars, vehicular interception, they, you know, so they don't get hit. Those highlighted are the only changes that we're doing to the site. The, the landscape is gonna stay as large as it's seen, that plan is not changing, with the exception of the changing of the green wall. We still have our stormwater management areas, as, as I referenced, and those will be planted accordingly, and the sitting areas along the adjacent street, still, still intact on Washington Street, so. The, the other aspect of this application is the request of the elevation change. Those are on the rear of the building. So this is the view of the, the west elevation, or the, really, the, the rear of the building. And you can see the, the existing roof line, the approved roof line is the one that's, this partially covered surface here. These are the two structures that are protruding up, one of which is the, a parapet blocking some mechanicals on one side of the structure, and then the elevator shaft, the overrun for the elevator. And those are the, the requests for the, the overrun in just those areas. Mark Camo is here to answer any questions, he can kinda go over the reasoning for those elevations, for those elevate, elevation overruns. Largely, it's because we're in a, in a flood zone, and a lot of it has to do with the shallow groundwater table, but he can kinda get in, into that and his reasoning of why he put it in these locations. And then when he's done, I'd like to just show you some vantage photos that we've done to identify how these, these overruns really are perceived from ground level. So, Mark, do you wanna just give a few words there?
Good evening, Mark. Good evening, Mark Camo, project architect for Station One. I guess I'm here for corporate knowledge. In, when a project starts construction, there's, the architect goes into a phase called construction administration, and there's, and the client kind of engages for a certain degree of involvement with the architect. With the boat hull, I'm there every day. With this project, because I'm out of the country most of the time in the summer, it was an RFI, quality contract administration, request for information, I answer information. So, when ground was broken, we had a, we had a typical raft mat foundation design. Hit groundwater, bad materials, and right away we had to do augured helical piles under key points in the foundation. With that came the notice from Schindler, we had a Schindler 5400 elevator, just like we used in Mystic Landing by the Y, planned for the building, and we couldn't use it because it was piston base, 'cause it was under four stories, and they wouldn't warranty the piston base in the flood zone. So, they switched the elevator, I don't even know what the elevator brand is now, but they switched it, and rather than, than a piston that pushes the elevator up and doesn't require a penthouse, 'cause it can't be put in the flood plain, they've got an overhead crane rail with, with a lift on it, so that's where the five feet came from for that. I, I had mentioned that, you know, that's allowable, you have to go back to the planning and zoning, and there was another change that, that they tabled off to get all the, like Sergio had indicated, to get all the changes together. So the other change was the fact that the building was a, was a steel I-beam superstructure with, with open web bar joists floor system. It was COVID when we started the building, and from what I understand, from the steel supplier here in Stonington, there were no bar joists to be found, because Amazon was building fulfillment centers around the country, and there was literally like no bar joists to be found. And I know that to be the case, because when, when we did beer brewing, we couldn't find bar joists. So they switched to, to D-BI beams, and this had a domino effect. We were gonna have a three-zone variable air volume HVAC system, which would require three compressors that were gonna be mounted on the west side of the building, that could be screened, not a big deal. Well, now, we have no bar joists to get through the plenum, we have I-beams in the way, so every unit had to then have its own, we could do PTACs in the wall, like, like a motel has, but you don't want that. So, it was switched over to a regular split hydroair system, and so now we have, I believe it went from three units to eight, and you can imagine what the west facade would look like with eight compressor units hanging off the face of the building. So, it required a farm up on top of the roof to just locate all of them up there, kinda like the new building that's across from that, that package store. I forget the name, the, the financial fellow there, has his wrapped, wrapped in a parapet as well. So that's, that's what gave rise to, to, to the parapet that surrounds the, the McCampli units. That's the history of it, basically.
Any questions of the architect?
So I just wonder if this site, as far as the ground and the elevator and everything, I mean, that that could not have been anticipated based on the area that it's in? I mean, it's not unique to that corner.
Right, well, they, they had remediated tanks before the construction, we have members of gas station.
Yeah.
And where the tanks were, none of that was indicated. So we went off, 'cause that's as good as having a boring, when you take out the fuel tanks, but, you know, the land can change, look at the Leaning Tower of Pisa. The land can change just feet away, and it was a, a big disappointing surprise, because it asked, it added tens of thousands, just to the foundation alone, never mind the rippling effect of the, of the elevator and so on.
So, at that point, why didn't you just go back and, and, you know, from my perspective, money doesn't come into play here, right? That's, that's not something we consider. Saying, you gotta redesign this building so it's within the height restrictions that we have requested, but why didn't your client do that? Why did they just move forward, knowing that they were not, not, you know, within the bounds that had been set for the building?
I don't know, I, I wasn't, yeah.
This is what I don't know with them, yeah.
I don't think it was possible to redesign it. Mark may have somewhere in--
You can always redesign a building. They hadn't constructed it yet.
No, no, because in order to get the elevator to the top rooftop floor, we need the overrun.
You have to lift it, you can't push it.
Right.
But they could have redesigned the building so that they didn't need--
An elevator to the rooftop.
They could have thought of something else. Sorry--
Take off the floor.
This not, this not an appropriate site for this building any longer. We need to start again. I mean, these are the kind of things that--
It would have significantly compromised the, the design of the building, but to your point, they could have done that.
Right, right.
I'm not arguing with that.
And at the time, there, there was a regulation that, that, that these mechanical equipments, at the pleasure of the board, could exceed the max site by 10 feet. So that, so that, that's--
But we didn't.
I think that's what they ran with.
But we didn't at the time.
Right.
Right.
Any further questions of the architect?
I'd also like to understand why we could not have anticipated the, the propane tanks and the, the need from the electrical company to have that platform, like, why, why wasn't that anticipated?
Typically, coordination with the utility companies doesn't happen every time during permitting. We could have, I mean, we can Monday morning quarterback if all you want, but typically we don't, we don't have contact with ever source, because they don't wanna see the project until it's permitted by the town. So, could we have anticipated it if we thought, if I had some thought and asked them? Possibly, but that was not done, and then it was brought to me subsequently that it was needed, so.
And the propane tank?
It was another thing that was just brought to me after the fact. I, unfortunately--
Yeah, I mean, really, what I'm hearing is this was a very poorly managed project.
I think that's unfair.
And now you're asking the town to come in at the last minute and kinda say, it doesn't matter.
Respectfully, I think that's unfair. This is a very tight site, I think we did the best we could with redevelopment of it, and these are, I, I would see these as minor changes, adding a couple of propane tanks outside the building that meet zoning code, that are not gonna be intrusive to anyone's view, is a minor thing. So, agree to disagree? I, I give you my opinion, but you, you're entitled to yours.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I wanted to-- I wanted to, if you're all set, I was going to show one more exhibit.
Certainly, yeah, no, the floor is yours.
I didn't know if you're, you're. So the other thing that we did was went and took some photos at different vantage points. This exhibit shows, you know, different points around the building. And what we did was drew a line from where the the structure, you know, roof line is to where the where the overages are in the rear. And you can see that from these vantage points, this, you know, this point is sticking up considerably higher than one in the back. It's just the way that the perspective is. I think that unless your eye is really catching it from certain perspectives, that it almost disappears in a lot of areas that you're looking from. We took pictures from the front of the building, obviously from the front, you can't even, you can't even see to the rear. If you're looking at it just from the front of the building, it disappears completely from.
This is, this is helpful from one perspective for the setback thing that that we were talking about possibly incorporating, that setback does make a difference.
Where you're standing.
Yeah.
And believe me, I'm not arguing, if you're way over on the fire district side or on the taco restaurant, you're going to see these, you know, you'll see these, these sticking up from certain vantage points. But, and I can pass this around if you want a closer look, but the amount that you're seeing above, I don't think it's terribly imposing to the view from different vantage points, even from across the street. You can see we drew the red line following the the approved roof line, and you're only seeing a small portion of that roof line above that view. And trying to look, looking at that. This is the view from the top area on the other side. You can see we also drew the roof line, and it does, it does stick up slightly from this vantage point. It actually is lower, but I mean, that's, that's from a very close vantage point in the building here. But that's where folks are going to be walking. Some folks will be driving, but where your eye is drawn when you're driving, it should be somebody looking at the road, but might look up at the building and from across the street. So we tried to take different vantage points to get a characterization of what you're going to see when you're out there. So. Just some other consideration as to the impact of of this in the overall scheme. We understand, yeah, maybe we should have gave it some more forethought, but I think the the end result would still be the same as this presentation shows. Do you have any other questions?
To conclude your presentation?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions of the architect?
Yeah, I have questions regarding the landscaping. So how how large are the trees that you're going to be putting in?
Planting, I'm not sure. Typically, when we plant trees, I got pictures of them that were planted. I'll find those real quick for you. So my client also owns 40 Mystic Mason's Allen Road, Mystic Landing. These are the trees that are over there. These would be the same trees that would they, he would plant. Those look like they're, I don't know what they were at planting, but probably five or six feet tall. And then they'll grow from there.
So we're going from a 30-foot wall at the start to a five-foot tree that grows how many, how many feet a year, how many inches a year?
Not sure.
And I see here you've got listed arbovide, crimson, Norway maple, ginkgo. None of these will grow in that little alleyway. They're not, they're not up light.
Where are you seeing that list?
I'm seeing it under, consider a narrower proposed equal tree.
Those are recommendations by the town engineer.
They're not going to grow out there.
Those are recommendations by the town engineer. Those are not our, our selections.
So your selection is this tree, which gets how, I mean, there's not that much room there. So what I don't want to see is we put in a, a string of trees at a, and then two years later, they're all dead because you don't, you don't have enough light, which I think was the reasoning for the wall, to be perfectly frank. You don't have a lot of space, you've got a tall building in a tall building, it's coming down like this. I think that that was the whole point of this very unique solution that was brought forward. So I'm just not sure why you're changing it at this point.
I guess my client felt it saw a softer than putting a big imposing wall and just trying to block out the building behind it so that it would allow some light penetration. And we were going to be blocking a window. So I think he just had a change of opinion by working with the, trying to work with the neighboring property of something that's, that wasn't just going to be a big wall, solid wall, something a little bit softer. So, but we're, this was the, this was the tree that he preferred. If there's any consideration of a different type of tree that might work better in this area, we'll consider it. But the the point of the vegetation was to have something grow there naturally as opposed to.
Columnar, so it's, it works in that location.
Works in that location, but still.
There are a bunch of species that are columnar that.
Yeah, but the only one.
That could succeed, I think.
But these, these are not evergreens, so it's not going to work.
No, the species that I'm talking about are not evergreen, they're deciduous. The columnar trees.
Right.
Are deciduous.
Right. That's what they're saying is, so response to comment, the applicant prefers to use a Cleveland Select ornamental pear.
Mm-hmm. That's a deciduous tree. Correct.
Just to note, the screening isn't a required component of the application. It was a voluntary introduction.
But the commission can require.
Correct, if there's due cause for shielding, but it's not a, it's not a requirement per the regulations that it was screened. It was initially put in as a voluntary screening.
The Bradford pear is a tree that's typically used on the street. They use them in, it's orange, ton of orange, has it on the green. And and they're, they can be pruned to be columnar, and they use them as street trees where where they are shaped in a columnar fashion. So so Bradford pear is is an appropriate tree for this. This could be an appropriate tree for this.
Any further questions? Hearing none, are we ready to go to public comments? Yes?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak either in favor or against or make a statement on this application?
I have a question for that.
Please, who just identify herself for the record?
I'm Suzanne Moore, and I own the adjoining property that used to be Mystic Lumber. And they actually prepared some information with pictures. I don't know if I have enough stuff. Everybody, but I'm sure.
Thank you.
There's a letter that I'll read as well because it's kind of illustrated, and I'm sure you're aware of the site because it's pretty low prominent. And, dear commissioners, I've owned that adjoining property, which is former Mystic Lumber and now Mystic Junction since 1997, developing it to shops, offices, and one apartment. I have concerns with the safety and access between my building at 44 Washington Street and the new building at 32 Broadway Avenue. The site plan on paper, which has actually been that package of information, and just to do kind of a quick history, this is what I bought. And I guess you could pass it around. And I developed it, worked on it with the different buildings of the time, and now it's pretty much, keeps evolving. And this was when there was a gas station. Essentially, the site plan, which is what I'm working off of. The site plan on paper may appear to be adequate to accommodate two propane tanks and trees. However, I'm submitting photos of the site to show better perspective and real views of the site conditions. The wall of my building is 22 feet high, and the wall of 32 Broadway is a 46-foot-high wall, basically, forming a narrow corridor approximately 11 feet and 5 inches wide. And I've measured it, taken pictures of the measuring tape between, 2 and 1/2 feet is my property, leaving about 8 feet and 11 inches of theirs. Within this, the site plan shows 220-gallon propane tanks for a total of 240 gallons of propane in between those two walls, on a 5-foot-wide concrete pad along, which hasn't yet been poured, but it's formed with the outline of the pressure-treated lumber. In any case, that, it's simply a maneuver in a way that I think normally with propane tanks, number one, requires a propane tank greater than 125 gallons to be 10 feet from a property line or an important building. And I also put that regulation at the end of all of that. It's copied as it, as it's written at the very end of that information. It requires any of those tanks that are greater than 125 gallons, that's liquid gallons, to be 10 feet from the property line and point building. However, there are two tanks of 120 each for a total of 240. Does this mean that multiple tanks can all be placed together and be exempt from that 10-foot distance requirement? I met with the Mystic Fire Marshal, Chris Clarkin, and I also received an email from the building official, Larry Standard, regarding this. It appears that by using 220-gallon tanks, it's simply a maneuver to avoid the regulation and creates a potentially dangerous situation. Also, the site plan shows that there's 5'9" from the concrete pad to my line. Not so. This is actually what it is. That's today. I took it with a measuring tape, the distances, and it basically measures 2 feet 8 inches. Now that's where they want to place the trees. And they're showing in that plan that it's 5'9" on the site plan that's included in there too. And I outlined my building better, and I also showed the colored trees and the propane tanks to illustrate it. I don't know where the 5'9" is because there's really only 2 feet 8 when you get to my property line, and there's 2 feet 6 inches of my property all along that edge. So to illustrate this better, this, it's also in there too, but it shows you the comparison. This is what's real. That's what's there. And I had my son stand there, kind of show you how narrow this really is with his arms outstretched. You see it on the site plan on paper. It looks like, yeah, you could put propane tanks right here, that's where they go. And then supposedly between my line, which is right there, they're putting trees. Really? You're going to be digging into that like 2'8" realistically? As I measured it today. And then they're going to be in my property. They already cracked the fence that I had. I had a nice vinyl gray fence that was alongside up front, and they told me they were going to take it down and give it to me. This was the owner and all this stuff, you know, a couple times. And, and next thing I know, the back, I was in it, it's all trash, they pulled it off and threw it in the dumpster. So fencing, I don't know, but. The next part about trees, as I said, LS5 Zone does not require a buffer or screen in between two properties. The prior approved plan was for that 25-foot-high fence, which we probably would know, to cover all my building, including upper windows, because they were fearful of whatever mural ends up on that wall wouldn't really contribute overall to the streetscape of Broadway, so we just wanted to mask it. Well, I have to say that that was during the time of COVID when all this was happening, and Dave Rathman was the chairman, whom I know pretty well too. And he commented about the way that it would potentially, you know, shut out the light and everything with my building and so on. And that quote was made, I believe, by the architect, whom I never spoke with. So I don't know how all this got together, but they ended up approving that wall. And they come to find out when it was time to actually construct it, the owner called me in a panic and said, well, it's going to cost me so much money, it has to have a building permit. And I said, I know that. So I have the approval. I said, well, that's not a building permit. Well, it doesn't matter, I have the approval. I said, fine, build a wall then, I guess. He said, oh, it's going to be steel, and it's going to be expensive, and I got to finish my parking lot, so maybe I can fix your building and make it look really pretty. And I said, I'm going to paint it anyways. It was a faded green, and I said, I'm planning to paint it. So I did, I painted it, and now it's blue. And I don't find that distasteful, I don't know. But nobody ever spoke with me about all those things other than the owner, and kept trying to block off all of those areas. But anyhow, the, instead of the fence, they're showing eight trees planted in a width of only 2 feet and 8 inches. For the total width of 11 feet 5 inches between buildings, what is the need of screening by trees of any kind? What are they screening, me from them or them from me? This will eventually encroach up my property, block light and view of my upper windows, and may cause mold because moisture and restricted circule, air circulation. Trees, but most importantly, the trees will impede access to either building for maintenance and emergency access. Going back when that gas station was there, we had a van that caught on fire, and it melted all the areas around my upper windows. And luckily, the fire department is right next door, and they put it out. I mean, we're just asking for problems by putting 240 gallons of propane in there. The other thing that it doesn't mention in here, but in the issues of its NFP 58, the regulation that controls the placement of tanks, it talks about points of ignition and static from overhead wires, which there are some right there where you look at that portion of the building. In fact, they drop down kind of just at that, there's a whole service right where the propane tanks are going. And then there's a stall for a car that's right on the side, which again, ignition is what they cite for safety with propane. Electrical switches, telephones, doorbills, automobiles, or other engines can provide any kind of sparks. But in that narrow corridor is what I'm getting at, where you're putting in 240 gallons of propane, and then you're adding trees to make it even more difficult to maneuver in there should there be an emergency for any reason. I mean, I just don't believe it's sensible. Granted, they're under 125 gallons each tank, but I don't know. Anyways, the drainage, the other issue, the water table in the area, so it's been one or two feet below the surface. I know, because I dug on my property at times, and it all caves in on you, so all I had to do is ask a neighbor. And when, we've had heavy rains, and the site's been pumped many times onto Washington Street, and this results in a river effect that floods Washington Street, creates a hazard, especially when it freezes. And at times, it makes it impossible to access the parking area that's in front of my building at 44 Washington, and it's the only entrance that you can get in and out. But we've had it shut down with the flood from them pumping down the street. And again, in that information that I gave towards the end, you'll see pictures of Washington Street going underwater as a regular thing, but that just contributes to it. I know there's provision. I know there's provisions for onsite drainage, but what happens if they prove to be inadequate? I mean, there's no place else to put it. And then you've got more roof on this new building that's going to contribute to it as it drains somewhere. So all things considered, our high-water table, you dig down a foot and 1/2, and it's water. It's just going nowhere. So it's not a big surprise. I mean, all these things were there. But as I said, I have the issues, and my biggest concern, again, is what it realistically looks like. I don't know where they got 5 and 1/2 feet in the 2 feet 8 inches that I measured today. But that doesn't seem correct. And I guess that's about it.
Does that conclude your comments? Thank you very much, Suzanne. Does the applicant wish rebuttal time?
I can't really comment on things that happened during construction, what happened between the contractors. I wasn't that closely involved in that. So I'm not going to get into that. But I can say that the intent of my client was to, was he thought that this would be in, the wall removal would be an improvement to the site. I guess some don't see it that way, which I can totally respect. But the intent was that we take down this imposing structure and put in something a bit softer. I don't think that landscaping is going to detract from the property. I do understand, as more is concerns of accessibility through that alleyway and safety. We don't want to do any, we don't want to create an unsafe condition. But what I can say is that the propane tanks will be permitted through the building department. I think we've already gone through the building department and gotten relatively, I believe, a high sign on that. It's just we've been held up by trying to get this approval. We didn't want to further cause any more issues on the site or any other cease and desist by going forward with anything. But I believe the building department has reviewed the propane tanks. I believe they meet code. That's a bit out of my area expertise, but that is something that I do know they meet zoning. We have a survey that was prepared by my company, a licensed surveyor. So as far as the distances to the property line, I am confident in those, and those have been vetted by town engineer and your staff. And we're not here to change anything, to say that any distances have changed. The building is built in the proper location, and it observed all of the setbacks. And the structures that we are proposing are simply to provide utility access and to add the propane tanks and further screen the trash containers in that alleyway. If it is going to be too congested in that area, we could consider maybe removal of some of those trees in that spot.
Could the propane tanks be buried?
I don't believe so, because we really don't have any space left to do so. Tanks...
You can tie them down.
Yeah, they, so, yes, they could be buried if we had a space to do so, but we can't put them in paved areas. They cannot be driven over. The remaining areas are stormwater, and there are some recreational spaces.
They can't be driven over if you provide a structural cap and they're possibly...
My experience with propane companies, and Chuck, maybe yours is different, is that they have to have that at-grade fill-up, and you can't drive over that. But I have, in certain instances, drove over portions.
I have seen cases where they fitted a manhole, a pre-capped structure, around the propane access port.
Gotcha, okay.
So it is possible to bury them if you can't achieve the setbacks by, you know, under NFP 858.
I don't think that's a desire of my client. He's not here to, but it is a, it was a consideration.
It's a building department issue.
Correct. That is a consideration.
It's a building department, building permit issue.
I do know if they are buried, I believe the separation requirements increase as well to the building. If we could put them in the paved spaces, that would, that would work. But I think that the advantage of having the cans above ground is that they're small enough and safe enough where they can go right up against the building.
Right.
And they're, they're kind of, it's a matter of convenience for filling and having them in the back. So, like I said, we don't want to create an unsafe condition. If there's some consideration where we need to get a little bit more relief, we'll consider it. But once again, we're all within the setback. We are outside of all the setbacks. Technically, we could have built the building right up to the setback, but that didn't happen. It afforded us some space now to add these propane tanks and this decking to get access to the utilities. So...
You said the water table was 1 to 2 feet down?
I don't know if I said that, but I could be...
Did Mark say that? Is he still there?
I don't recall.
What did you say about the water table?
It is shallow.
You said shallow. Was that, I'm just thinking...
I'm saying it's shallow. I don't know the exact, I'd have to look it up.
No, no, my question is about the trees.
Yes.
Will they, if you don't know where the water, there's a potential that the water's too high, and the trees wouldn't live.
I don't know. I don't want to answer that. Sorry.
Well, I mean, they would not live if the water table was too high.
We have excavated those basins, and I think those are a couple feet down.
Okay.
They're not intercepting or underwater, so...
Okay, I thought that was the whole thing about the elevators. I thought you said the water table was shallow.
This is, this is about a foot and 1/2 down.
For a push.
Yeah, for a push.
Right, I, I can't see you behind the podium. Hi, Mark. What did you say? You said the water table was where?
High.
That's all you said? High.
The water table was high, and the material was not suitable.
Okay, but you just said high. You didn't give a number.
Right, I didn't.
No.
I didn't know it.
You don't know what it is.
2 feet sounds right.
Okay, so trees probably wouldn't live with a 2-foot water table. I'm just, not that I'm a landscape person, but I've been around enough that...
Some trees may be able to.
Not if their roots are 100% submerged all the time. Unless it's a hydrophilic, yeah, unless it's, you know, you put some skunk cabbage back there, that might work.
I think maples like water.
They do. I mean, some do, but it's just something to think about with those trees. And that they might not live. But we can bond, oh, there you are. We can bond, are they, does this go under a bond or something? Or don't they have to live for a year?
They have a, they have a performance and ENS bond for this site's construction, but that is...
Is landscaping included in that?
That's for the stabilization of the site. It doesn't inherently include the trees. Because when it was, when that ENS bond was originally developed, it was for the structural wall, too.
No, I know, but, yeah. So can we put something in? Do the trees have to live?
The landscaping could be established, but that would be, that would be for erosion and sedimentation to cheer it up.
Yeah.
It doesn't bleed off.
Yeah.
It's not going to, they're not going to die right away. They're going to die, but not right away.
Within a year or, you know, a year, two years.
Probably two seasons, because, yeah.
Just not, those trees behind...
Are we saying that there's no columnar tree that will survive in a wet environment like that?
Between, with very little sun.
Can I actually ask a question? I don't know the answer, but I'm curious. Could planters be used to put some kind of tree in there above, you know? So you would have planters with trees, which might also allow you to put different kinds of trees in there, as opposed to just planting them in the ground? And I'm thinking, just thinking, if you still wanted some kind of screening there, is that an option?
Potentially.
Okay.
I think so. I just don't know how restricted the roots would get and if it would restrict the growth of the trees.
Yeah, well, another big plant, I mean, I've seen the big ones where you can get a fairly good-sized tree, if that's what you, and they could also be moved in the event of, if you had to, you know, get emergency access, they could be pushed out of the way or pulled out of the way, whatever.
You may get, you may get smaller plants in there, though.
True, yeah. But I'm just trying to think of a, you know, way if they wanted to keep that.
And you have to water them and...
There aren't any, there's no green in the front of this building.
No.
This is just, it's very harsh. It's very, it's very hard. I mean, there's no green whatsoever. So, you know, just thinking about runoff. I mean, there's nothing here.
I don't think they're seeking a change to the original approval in that regard.
No, but we're talking about the trees.
Yeah, no, I know, we're talking...
Whereas at least the wall kind of gave it a little bit of a softer, you know, you're coming around the corner, and you're seeing this, you know, living area versus nothing but concrete.
I like the trees outside of that alley, like those, 1, 2, 3, the five trees. It's the three trees behind the building, and that are my concern. Well, regardless of the water, whether they're going to live or not, the five trees, I do like those.
And I lose it taking some of them out. That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good addition. I'm just, if they lived, that, the water's a whole separate thing, and the species. I'm not a big pear tree fan.
Yeah, I'm not either. I was really asking a question if there's something that would be tolerant, like, you know, we have trees that are salt tolerant. We, I don't know if we have, there are trees that live in swamps, I mean, and they don't, and they don't die.
Sugar maple.
Sugar maple.
There's also trees that, you know, dead tree swamps, because trees die because of root inundation.
Maybe they should do a little research from back.
Either that, or we could put a condition that an arborist develop a planting scheme for a tree that will survive high groundwater conditions.
But I think the trees behind the building, I don't like. It's too tight.
I agree with you.
If there was a fire, you couldn't get it with the trees and the propane. You can't get anything back there, so I don't like those three trees. But the five, I do like the other five trees.
I agree with you.
Of some type of other five trees or something.
The applicant agree with that?
I don't think that would be an issue. Yeah, just the 4 foot of those two trees that are congesting that area. You said there was 3, I think.
There's 3, it looks like there's 5, yeah. It's those 3 trees.
The ones directly behind the structure, right?
Right.
So are they going to be able to get to the propane tanks without crossing the property line?
Are you asking me, or?
I'm just, you know, I'm just looking at the pictures, which are with the thousand words, and...
You mean get them for delivery?
Yeah.
To deliver propane?
Yeah.
Generally, generally, that's done like an oil tank delivery where they have a long hose that they...
Well, they're accessed right from this, assuming that part was fine, they can access them right here. Is that, that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and that area was formed though, but they, they're not going to be pouring a pad there. That's not under, at least that entire area won't be a pad. We're not proposing it as such. I think that the contractor got stopped at that point, and they told them, "Don't pour any..."
Let's make sure there's no misunderstanding.
Yeah, right. But there may be a small pad or just some, some blocks that hold those. You need something to put those propane tanks that aren't sturdy.
Does that conclude your rebuttal?
Can I be, what?
Yes, sir.
There was, there was a quick mention that there was more roof now. There's not more roof now. There's elements of the roof that have been extruded about...
We understand that.
Okay, okay. And the, I was thinking about what you said, Lynn, about, well, then get rid of the elevator. The problem with that is that the, first of all, it, first of all, our client, he really thinks he came out with a really neat way to take advantage of a, of a site that's below the base flood elevation. We elevated the building. We put parking under it. He, you know, early on, he was thinking that this was like a poster child for resiliency. This is what you do in Mystic and resilient areas now. And then COVID hit, and it was just, you know, he would stand here and say, "This has been like a disaster since, since the minute they broke ground." But the thing about the elevator is, we couldn't just say, "Oh, well, let's get rid of the elevator," because when you provide any amenity, and the rooftop deck was always a part of the design, when you provide any amenity, you have to be able to get the non-ambulatory to it. So, so the, because you can go to the roof and I can go to the roof, anybody who's non-ambulatory has to be able to get up to the roof so that, so that, so we couldn't take the elevator out.
We get the ADA aspects of it.
Pardon?
We get the ADA aspects of it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, if that...
We understand accessibility and, you know, how, you know, it isn't just for the able-bodied. It's, it's for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further items on rebuttal? You wish any additional time, Suzanne?
I just have one more question, I guess.
Please come forward if you would, sir. Thank you.
The issue of just the trees itself in that space. Since I have 2 and 1/2 feet of the 11 feet 5 inches, and the trees are going to be planted in the narrow strip of 2 feet, 3 feet, I know trees tend to grow, if they do grow, who knows with a water table, but in any case, should they grow, then they'll start coming into my property. So do I have a right to...
I talked to your lawyer about that. Aerial encroachment can be an issue.
That's a legal thing, yeah.
It's an issue between property owners.
Because they don't just stay stagnant, is what I remember.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any, you wish any additional time, Sergeant?
I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions of the applicant? Are we at a point where we can close the public hearing? Clifton, do you wish to offer anything additional, though we asked you before?
I had a couple of comments, and it's just on the way that the plans were phrased. There's a note that says there overruns requesting a variance that I already spoke to Sergio that should be removed on those plans, because this would be by special use permit, not a variance. I noted the standards and powers relative to action on a special use permit, so hopefully the commission reviewed those. And then the other comment that, or the recommended stipulation that's above and beyond the normal ones are the rooftop deck area should remain open. It's enclosed from 3 sides. The fourth side can't be enclosed, because then FAR starts to count again. And so just adding that as a stipulation of approval.
So, and that's stipulation number 1 that you currently...
That's correct.
And the trees are just going to be covered under the bond? That they live, and they, if they die, they're...
Yeah, I think, and is it a, we could add the arborists to develop a planting plan for the trees that could survive.
Yeah, if you wanted to add the fourth one.
Yeah, that's what I had.
An updated landscaping plan with water-resistant trees.
Okay.
Not water-resistant, but...
Well...
Trees that can grow in a high-water table.
Hydrophilic.
Hydrophilic.
So your local arborists. And quick question, actually, because Carlene brought it up, on the waivers, did we get explanations on the waivers requested?
The waivers were in the original packet. I don't know if it's in the packet that's before you, or I don't know if it's the packet, in the packet I put online.
Okay.
But it wasn't the original.
It wasn't the original, okay. Any other questions, Clifton? Clifton, are you through?
I'm all set.
Okay, are we at a point where we can close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So it's 3 to 1, motion passes, public hearing is closed. It's the commission's pleasure on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this application, the special use permit, and also the waivers requested with the following four stipulations. Number 1, the rooftop deck area shall remain open. No enclosed areas permitted on the roof deck as part of a, as part of this approval. Number 2, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number 3, final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the towns' lands' evidence, land evidence records, pardon me. And number 4, a landscape architect will develop a planting plan to be submitted that will include trees that conscribe the water conditions on the strip on the side of the building that was proposed.
Water conditions, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made with four stipulations to approve the waivers and the special permit use. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second about Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, perhaps we should go by roll call on this, starting with Commissioner Morrison.
Start at the other end. I'm pondering in my head.
Okay.
I can go ahead. However you want. Go ahead, Ryan. I vote aye and pay the motion.
Aye.
Aye for Gary.
Opposed.
Lynn, opposed? And Commissioner Morrison?
I'm opposed.
Okay, the chair votes aye. It would have been tied two to, and I vote aye to break the tie. Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and that this.
Thank you.
Application for.
Do you have these pictures back? They were not in the packet.
Yeah, true.
The packet I have, I don't need these.
You have some for the record?
Those were separate.
Suzanne, could I get, could you email me a copy of the other photos, like sharing in your hand?
The old ones?
Yeah, the old ones. All right, thank you. I have this one.
What about the one I, it showed the perspective?
Can you email those to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to item AF, which we're taking out of our plan of conservation development. I thought we had a very good first meeting with our consultant. Laid out a lot of details and there was a lot of consensus around the appointment of a subcommittee, a steering committee to, to move the P O C D forward. And the framework of it was, was developed with the constituent fellow organizations or peer organizations, conservation and development and several others that, that we had listed, discussed, and my way of thinking, agreed upon. And we also had consensus that a steering committee was the way we wanted to go. Not everyone was present, and so we decided to move it over to a full board meeting for, for more visibility on a motion to, to both establish the committee and then to appoint members, which will be done by nomination and election. So I believe first, before we can entertain nominations, we have to first approve a motion to create a steering committee. Clifton, I know you had some input.
That we did.
Did we, did we do that?
We did.
You did formally vote to establish a steering committee.
Do we need to call it out?
Of unknown number and unknown membership.
Okay.
You did establish one.
So would the next motion then be to establish the, the numbers of members and that?
Correct, so now.
Okay, that's the part that I'm talking about.
Now we're at the point of appointment where you choose to appoint how many commissioners to that board or to that steering committee, and then you would appoint requisite members of boards and commissions, so you choose.
Roger.
And then you would identify if you want any citizens as well, and then we would go through a process for that.
Okay, that's the point. We're, we're in agreement. That's the point. That's the point we're at.
We left it, we left it at the, at the discussion. The discussion ended.
That we would establish a steering committee.
That we would establish a steering committee, but since all the members of the commission weren't present, this was going to be an opportunity for them to say whether or not they wanted to be on that steering committee. And so they could put their names for the nomination.
Correct.
So since it was, since we only had a couple of people present, we didn't really get the opportunity to talk as a group about which commissioners were going to serve on this.
So would it make, okay, so procedurally, would we want to outline just the numbers of, you know, the people and groups that we want, and then the commissioners would say who wants?
I think that's where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would say that'd be, you know, identifying the numbers of members total. How many of those are commissioners and then what makeup and then.
That's, we're in agreement. I think that's where we're at.
Right, okay. So, I mean, the way it had been discussed, and I guess for the folks who weren't there before, we had determined to have three planning and zoning commissioners be a part of the steering committee. One member would be from the Economic Development Commission. One member would be from Housing Opportunities Commission, one from the Conservation Commission, one from the W P C A, and then there would be two citizen members who would be interviewed and selected by the P N Z folks on the board to also join that steering committee. Is that what everybody's?
That's not my, that's not my recollection.
Four members that wanted to be on it and you were going to open it up.
Well, four members had registered interest. We didn't necessarily agree that four members would be elected. I think that's.
Who didn't say three?
You didn't, you didn't specify a number of commissioners.
So we didn't, maybe that's the first question that we should ask.
And you didn't, there was consensus on those board or those commissions.
Okay.
But it wasn't the full, we will have these.
Okay.
Everything is still technically open at this point for discussion, but the general consensus at that meeting was it was those boards and commissions. Some make up of planning and zoning commissioners who express interest. And at least one citizen member, but you didn't specify.
Two, okay.
Right. And we did say.
I thought we talked about two, yeah.
I thought we talked about one, but we did talk about also limiting the size of the subcommittee to under 20 or something.
It gets, it does get unwieldy.
The original number was between seven and nine, which is what Commissioner Morrison suggested.
Yeah, I think that's a good number.
I agree with that number.
Yep, so do I.
I think nine's the top paramount number.
Totally agree.
The widest spread. I put in my memo, I had personal recommendations on what that makeup.
Appreciate that.
They are slightly different than what was discussed, but happy to talk about those.
Can I just, once again, clarify the coastal resilience and ensure that that commission or board is being represented? Thinking about that's a number one concern going forward for the town of Stonington. Thinking about the amount of time that an effort and interest that, that area was given during our zoning rewrite and the number of changes that we made. Looking at that very carefully and that we want to make sure that that is reflected in the P O C D going forward. And I just want to be sure that we're sure that that is represented with, with what we've got, what we just discussed being outlined.
I, I think, I think the thought was that it is a very important area and it did get a lot of ink and a lot of concern. I don't think it affects the whole town. So, so I think what we tried to do was the people that are going to be part of the board, the steering committee, are people that affect the whole town. And, and the boards like, like resiliency that would affect resiliency, like the flood board and others that, that are looking at this very carefully, would clearly be dealt with. But, but I also don't object to them being on it full time if, if everybody thinks that's the way it ought to go. This is a consensus thing.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if everybody thinks, and I don't, I don't discount what you said. There was a lot of interest in that. It was the first subject we'd covered and I'll give us some credit. I think we did a good job covering it. And if the board feels that that should be added, then we should add it. But I, I, I think if there's going to be two citizen members, that puts us at 10 people. That's an unwieldy number. We should go back to one citizen member. And, and that would put us at nine if we add resiliency. So it would be four committees, housing, economic development. Could you read them off again, Ryan?
Yeah, we had economic development, housing, conservation, W P C A, and then.
Right.
Resiliency.
Five. So five and three plus one.
Are you thinking the flood and erosion control board or are you thinking the member of the climate change task force?
Climate change task force.
The climate change.
I'm open to either.
Yeah, because I, I do have to say that a lot of the resiliency is focused primarily, a lot of people think of sea level rise. But when you look at like climate change task force, they're also looking at stronger storms, drought, kind of all of the climate, potential climate impacts that.
So which board would that be?
Climate change task force.
Climate change.
Okay.
That was, that was my recommendation. If, if it was a one-to-one replacement, I would say that over W P C A.
Does that deal with your concern?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I think it's a good addition.
But I think, I, I think.
My, yeah, my, my focus was a little different, just background. Both in my previous job up in Maine and then for about six years as a private contractor, I did the job that S L R is doing. And so I've done about 20 of these long-range master plans in my career. And you, and what I've seen is usually you don't get the opportunity to have so many boards and commissions because so many communities don't have that citizen expertise, which is of great benefit to Stonington. But having also just general citizens at a number, a larger number is always good too because then they come in without inherent predisposition on a certain topic or an inherent bias on something. They can look at it. I'm just a resident. I really don't have skin in the game relevant to my commission. I can speak about this on a wide array of subjects. Or I can speak about it just, you know, individually and how it impacts me. So that experience is good to have consistently instead of just getting it once or twice during the workshops. So that's why I recommended two citizens at least. Doesn't say that everyone else isn't a citizen of town because they're on a board of commission. It just, they have certain angles or certain things that they're really focused on.
Yeah.
Whereas a general citizen really can open up and say, well, I don't like it because of this, whereas somebody else might not have that.
Let's, let's draw a line under this then. So, so what you're saying is you don't think 10 people is an unwieldy number?
I, I recommended nine.
But I think you were wanting one of the other commissions.
Yeah, I, I recommended the climate change task force over at W P C A solely because climate change is the whole community and W P C A is just the sewer component, which is a small subset. But if you did add, if you did add that commission, then I would say 11.
Get another.
So the reason why I'm in favor.
My only concern about eliminating, eliminating W P C A is we, we might get into some areas where if we are going to consider, you know, different uses, perhaps extension of sewer or water. And I know we don't control water, but certainly the extension of sewer might be a consideration. And there are a number of areas that have already come up when we've discussed commercial areas that don't have sewers. And, and I didn't know whether, so I, again, I leave this, I leave this up to the board. You know, I, I guess it's not a super strong feeling. I think that, that I managed a board that had 29 members and it was almost impossible to come to consensus on a regular basis. And it was, it was good in some respects, but, but it was also very unwieldy. And so I think if we can keep it under 10, it's great.
You could also add alternates.
If everyone, I, I think I agree that resilience is, is a really important subject and probably more important than W P C A.
That's how I feel. I feel like W P G A, I think they take whatever the plan of conservation development is and they have to figure out a way to implement it. I mean, they shouldn't be restricting our plan. They should be figuring out a way to implement our plan. And it might be limited by the budget or it might be limited by this, that, or the other thing, but I'm not sure.
Well, one thing that, one thing it could do is it could, you know, P O C Ds can drive capital improvement plans. And if, if the thought is that we're expanding, let's say, or changing an industrial area to a commercial area or vice versa, a commercial to an industrial area, that we definitely need sewers in for processed water or whatever, that, that, that may form the basis for a capital improvement strategy, you know. The P O C D is supposed to drive those kinds of things. But again, I don't, I think W P C A may be something that we can coordinate with, with a specialized meeting as opposed to having them at every meeting.
Yeah, makes sense to me, yeah.
Do you, do you agree? I know you have a particular expertise in this.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, my thought, it's sort of the same as you're saying, but opposite. I think the climate change task force, we're all aware of the climate change task force. We're all aware of climate change. We do have S L R who's writing this and they have experts in climate change.
They do.
So do we need someone from that committee? We all, we, we sat through the zoning rewrite, well, not me, but that part of it. And we all know all the issues surrounding it. So bringing them to the table, I still think W P C A is more integral in a, in a plan of development and conservation than, because I think we all have the, the knowledge for, of climate change. And we know there's bigger storms. I mean, I, I work with this all the time, you know, so I, I mean, I could say I could represent climate change. I'm not on the commission, but, you know, I mean, I.
So, so I am on the task force as well and I can tell you that there is not a lot of awareness on what's really going to impact the entire of Stonington. A lot of focus has been on singular areas and even when the majority of the consultants that come in have focused on, on like singular areas and there's a lot of non-water related climate change impacts that just nobody is tracking.
But not a whole list of, over the entirety of.
Exactly, so that's like, yes, so.
But we all know that.
I don't think we all do. Like I think.
Well, but maybe. I, I can bring that to the table. Right, I mean, so I'm saying like there are other people. So do we need a whole commission or would we rather see a different commission or two citizens?
Let me just ask this. Let me just ask this. It, it seems like there's strong opinions for W P C A and resiliency. Can we just have like a show of hands, a poll as to who would go along with 10 people so that they would both be represented?
Put 10 people on. I mean, chances are they'll show.
Show hands in favor of, of both agencies.
I'd be fine with that. I would also, I would actually say add one more public representative, then you have 11.
Yeah.
But that's, that's however.
Does it matter on a reading, Clifton? Does?
No, because there really aren't going to be votes taken.
Yeah.
The, the number of people is really, the, the goal of the steering committee is to guide in the place of the commission doing all of that work by itself, right? So when S L R brings products, whether it's the existing conditions, whether it's the survey results, whether it's the description or seeking feedback on how the public engagement process is going to go, that steering committee is going to guide that process instead of the commission. So it's going to be a subcommittee of the commission guiding that with additional support. But there aren't going to be votes taken because the responsibility of the P O C D at the end of the day is this commission, so you're the only one making a vote.
Correct.
So everything, everything preceding is more advisory, guidance, telling S L R, you know, this is what we like that we've seen. This is how we want to see public engagement done. These are suggestions or comments we have on the draft document. You know, all, all of that stuff, that's really where that steering committee is going to focus on.
Okay, we had also talked about, about a member of this board serving as the chair and, and clearly the chair of this committee should be elected by the committee. So, so the chair won't be named by the board. The chair will be, be elected by whoever we appoint to the, to the committee to lead this steering committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
So are we in agreement then with adding the W P C A to Ryan's list? Or I'm sorry, adding resiliency.
Yeah.
Climate change and adding, we'd, we'd retain the two because you've named two. So it'd be 11 total.
Or no, okay, so.
It'd be 10.
10. 10.
It'd be 10 with the current, and the way we currently have it, and again, I think maybe we need to confirm. It would be three. We, we have written down three, but I know we had also discussed four P N Z members being on that. So I don't, I don't know if anybody has a feeling on that either.
There's no difference procedurally to how it's run, whether it's three or four. It's still going to be a quorum. Anything three and over.
Right.
So it's always.
Again, I think if we can keep the number as, as low as, as low as possible. I, I think that, that, you know, it's also that the, the P N Z doesn't overwhelm the process. We will have three people there. Does everybody feel that's adequate?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave it at three. So do we need a motion to establish the membership?
The, the numbers and then the boards and commissions you're recommending. And then afterwards, you, there would, we would do the nominations.
Correct, correct, for the three members.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to establish the planning and P N C, the steering committee for the P O C D steering committee with the following makeup. From the planning and zoning commissioners, there would be three members. There would be one member from the Economic Development Commission, one member from the Housing Opportunities.
Development Commission, one member from the Housing Opportunities Commission, one member from the Conservation Commission, one member from WPCA, and one member from the Climate Change Task Force, and then two citizen members which, who would be interviewed and selected by P&amp;Z.
Okay, is there, is there a second? Seconded by Lynn. Any discussion on the motion for the steering committee makeup?
I, I did just want to say, and it's just, we were going to, if alternates were interested, they were eligible to be represented. So it does say the commission, commissioners, but I wanted to say alternates, just to, for clarity.
I'll add for clarity, planning and zoning commissioners and alternates to the planning and zoning commission, to be fair.
Thank you.
Okay. So a motion is made and seconded by Lynn, made by Ryan, seconded by Lynn. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Chair of things. Okay, so now we can open it up to nominations?
Yep.
I'd like to nominate Alisa. Alisa, please.
Is that the correct pronunciation?
Alisa.
Okay.
No, Lisa.
What?
Alexa.
Okay.
That's right.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Gary Belkey.
Gary Belkey?
Len, Len.
Len?
I'd like to nominate Ryan Deasy.
Okay. So are there any further nominations? Very not a motion to close nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the nominations for P&amp;Z members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
What, you say something?
Once you close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So we have to vote by ballot now, correct?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
We should do a ballot.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody gets three votes.
Oh, my God. This is way too far. Please. You know what? I'm going to withdraw my name, just to make it easier.
Go ballot.
That would make three then, right? That would make three. Are you sure you want to do that?
Yep.
I think you would make a very valuable member of this committee.
So why?
But if you're sure, if you're sure, if you're sure you want to withdraw, then that's your, your choice.
I don't think you should withdraw.
All right, fine. I'll, I'll stay in. Just don't vote for me. I'll stay in.
Okay.
I was trying to simplify the process.
No.
So everybody gets three, everybody gets three votes.
So do we all get three pieces of paper?
No, you just write three names.
Okay.
And, and we'll tabulate the number of votes that each candidate gets, and.
Clifton's just laughing.
Those that get, I think the way it's going to work is those.
Oh, we have a whole stack of paper over here.
Yeah, I could say.
You want to say one on that? I think it's like in my car.
I'll take it.
I've got this new person. It's too small. Like, now I'm just cleaning it. Since I noticed it.
I didn't, just.
Take me to my wallet.
You can't vote for yourself, right? Because then you vote for everybody else.
No, because then it would all equal.
Oh, okay.
You can't vote for yourself?
You can.
No, you can't. If you didn't, then it would, the numbers would be even.
Piece that I could steal? Yes, that's good.
Are we just grabbing, grabbing any kind of paper? Or just taking any piece of paper?
Yeah.
I'm just grabbing a piece. I'm ripping up another piece. That's how I'm doing it.
Chuck, just for the record, in this case, alternates can vote.
Can they? Alternates can vote?
I would say because it's a.
Because they're, they're, yeah.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I think it's going.
I know, it was a huge piece of paper.
Bunch of pasta, pasta today, and I'm going to have, I'm going to have Clifton.
Carry him down to Clifton?
Please.
Don't, don't she.
I have yours.
Yeah, he's already written mine off.
Okay.
She's got the book on those.
I won't look.
Don't look, don't look.
I'm just going to vote for you.
Need the decoder ring.
Can I do a write-in candidate?
75% chance Climate Change Task Force could nominate me, so it's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's the good.
Well, that's the thing, right?
Is that your vote?
Yeah.
Who am I missing?
I used a whole piece of paper.
I was going to vote for Colleen. Colleen was going to be.
This is going to be the public at large.
Colleen gets to vote?
No.
Why can't you be public at large?
I can't. I have to work out. I know I had to miss this meeting because of Climate Change Task Force.
Well, that's going to be the whole next challenge, my name, please, rest of me.
Yeah, that's.
You guys don't care about numbers, you just want results?
Just, just the results.
All right.
Three members, top three vote.
The three members with the most getting votes, Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Belkey, and Commissioner Deasy.
Okay, well, I, I certainly thank everyone who has, has put in an effort to this and expressed interest, and, you know, this will come back to the full board, so everyone is still involved.
Is there anything else we need to do for this? Is that it?
We have.
Oh, no, no, we need to talk about the, how we're going to do the citizen people.
Correct. Correct, correct.
So how would that, has that been, Clifton, in your experience? Is there a good way to approach that?
So the precedent that the town does, the same way that you guys have been pointed to this commission, is that there's an interview process. Typically, that's done by the board of selectmen since they're the ones that appoint to committees. But since the Planning and Zoning Commission is appointing this steering committee, you would be the ones that would be doing an interview.
It would be the entire Planning and Zoning Commission?
It would be, it would be the same thing, and then you guys would vote on who. We can do it by a ballot and, you know, same thing. But, but procedurally, I, I would like to do, just to formalize it, is to basically open it up, set a period of, I need applications by X date.
I would like to keep that as short as possible.
Yeah, because we're.
To keep this moving.
To keep it, to keep it moving. And this isn't going to change anything that we've talked about yet. It's going to change how the, how the results of the survey and how the public engagement gets decided. So, everything that we talked about with Robert at the last meeting, the survey component and questions, that's happening with this commission since you guys were there, and I'm going to have that to you next week to discuss, and to provide comments back. And then the survey goes live, and then after that, that's when the steering committee is going to start taking over based off who gets appointed. So, we would need to.
How do you advertise?
Yeah, we would, we would, we would advertise it. We can put it in the paper. We could set it for a period of, you know, a week or two weeks ideally.
Two weeks probably.
And then we would set up a special meeting.
Well, the, I was like, do, is there, do you foresee a shorter agenda coming up, like the second meeting in April, that we could do it in the beginning under citizen comms? Like, they do it selectman meetings when they do.
Well, yeah, it would be, it would be up to how you guys want to handle it. If you want, you want me to put it on a regular agenda, just so I don't constrain you with further meetings, then I can do that. And we could probably do that either at the beginning or at the end of the meeting and do the interviews.
At the beginning, just to, you don't have to sit through it.
That's a great, that's a great idea.
That, that actually, it's, it's in a public setting too.
We could prob, we could probably do it at the first meeting in April, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you might be here.
Sounds good.
I'm not here.
We could do, could do it at the second meeting.
Can we do, because that gives us, yeah, because that gives us, because realistically, you're not going to get this out advertised or whatever for a week, right? So it's two weeks turnaround, come in, and then you have to give the people time to be able to come, right? Give them some time on their schedule. So let's aim for the second meeting in April. I'll try to make it to that one. I'm not going anywhere then.
Should we have a motion to this effect, or is it just, is it just a consensus? Anyone disagree with that?
No, I'm people.
Oh, yeah, leave on the 17th.
So, I don't, I don't need a, necessarily a vote for this, but I'll, I'll advertise to citizen member openings with, get applications by, I'll set a date, you know, give it like two weeks or something, two, three weeks, and then say in that notice that you have to be at the, at the meeting. If you want, if you want to be.
Pursuing, yeah.
On, you have to be at this meeting in April.
Sounds good.
There's no makeup interview date.
Yeah, there's no second.
Should we do it at the end of the meeting?
No, the beginning, I think.
At the beginning.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So I'll just move forward with that, and then we'll do the same process, however many applicants we get, who knows?
You think anybody will know what the POCD, well, the people that are interested will know what the POCD is.
Would we, sort of like those interviews we have when we get, get selected or whatever, would we submit questions to you? We should have a standard set of questions for everybody.
If, if you want to do a standard set of questions, I think the basic question is, you know, what's your experience with long-range planning? What's your relationship to Stonington Mike, and, you know, what do you think you can bring to this?
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty standard questions, but we should have a, we've been on so many search committees, have a standard set.
You should have a standard question.
How about you guys email me a set?
Perfect.
And then I'll compile them.
Thank you. I like yours.
And they're going to be the same ones we all had when we got put on this one, right? They're the same ones for every single commission.
Then they come in, they, you know, answer those questions. You guys have the back and forth, and then we'll do a ballot vote depending on how many people. But if we only get two, those are the two, so.
All right.
Anyone else have anything to?
I would disagree with the ballot vote, and we can talk about that later. It might be helpful to, if we have, you know, 20 people who want to be on, everyone, we might be able to, like, everyone might have a plus and minus, so I think it could be a discussion as opposed to a ballot vote.
And, but the discussion would be in the public.
Yeah, I don't think that.
It is, it is during, it is when they appoint us. It's a public discussion.
I'd have to find out later, yeah.
They do. They sit there, and they, three of them sit up there.
Well, if you're looking for volunteers, if you're looking for volunteers, I, you know, I think it should be respectful and.
Well, we're not going to trash talk them, but I think that there might be something that someone saw.
I, I don't expect anybody's going to get insulted by.
No, but there might be something that someone heard that someone else didn't hear, so I think doing a ballot sometimes is too black and white, and Mary's like, "Oh, I heard that different," or, or something, and there could be.
How are you going to arrive at a consensus unless there's a ballot?
Yeah, it's going to have to be raising a hand or a ballot.
Who the, who the people feel is most.
Oh, I meant like not a silent ballot, not like we just did.
Okay.
No, it will be a vote, but it's not going to be a, put it into, you know, put it on the random piece of paper we have on our desk and do it to Clifton, kind of a vote.
I prefer, I prefer a ballot myself.
We could, we could do it as an open discussion and say.
And then ballot.
And then the ballot.
And then a ballot.
I think it's, it's, I think that's fair.
You could put everybody, maybe be a little more, have everybody's name and just hand a piece of paper around.
Yeah, I, I think that's more courteous.
Let's think about it.
I'll have time to prepare a ballot this time.
Okay. Yeah, then the candidate, the candidates with the most votes are.
We'll do, we'll do an open discussion.
Yeah.
And then that ballot circulate.
And then we'll do a.
Yes, okay.
Silent ballot.
Yeah.
And then I'll tabulate.
Yeah, sounds good.
Let's hope you get two.
Hope you get anyone.
Let's hope for two.
Anything further on that that we need?
I don't think so. I, I think that may conclude business if everybody's happy with the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.